Welcome to the Monday, March 6, 2023 Town of Grand Central. I'm happy that all of our planning board members are here. So we have a big forum. I know of no changes to the meeting agenda? None? Okay. You've received Jim's meeting notes? Are there any questions or comments? Is this on? Doesn't sound like it. I'm about to swallow it, so I can't get it. Well, I'll continue with some of the profile stuff. All right. That'll do now.
In the meantime, I would like to move that we accept Jim's meeting notes.
Thank you, Ed.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. You received the draft February 21 minutes? Any corrections, additions, amendments? Could I have a motion to accept them as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Correspondence and announcements. Well, we could vote on it. We have the motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, thank you. Moving on to correspondence and announcements. Anyone have anything? My only announcement is we're very happy Jim could be with us tonight because it's his birthday.
Everyone knows there's nothing better than working on a birthday.
So we've made a promise to him to keep the meeting as effective and as efficient as we can, so maybe he gets a part of it for his family at home. So congratulations, Jim. I don't think I'm on still, but I'm going to keep working at it and let other people know. Jim and I will share. Oh, that's definitely out. I'll move this so we can flick it around. First up this evening on your new applications, Laura Sullivan, 127 Hilltop Road, for site plan review and the construction of a pool house. And are you here? Would you like to step up to the microphone and explain to us what you'd like to do? There's a microphone there, and so we can capture everything you say.
I've never done this, so here we go. We are in, we have been permitted for a pool, as I think you're all aware. And now we're going to, we'd like to go into phase two, which is the pool house. We had some, some questions with where locations were. I think you all had, I think Marty and Hoyt came back with, and Wagner and Hutcherson came back with the hardscape plan, which I think you all received. So that's, that's it? What, I'm not sure what more details you asked me.
Well, I'll start with Jim. Jim, you have identified some questions, and then we'll start here.
So I did take a look at it and have a number of questions and items I think we'd like to see before we, well, as we move forward, I guess. First one is typically the other site plans, we have a sheet that shows topography on it. It shows existing topography and then any type of changes in the topography that will be shown. Given what's proposed here, oh, sorry. Given what's proposed with the pool house and some of the other changes, stuff like other things, we do need to see a sheet showing topography and any proposed changes to slope, which I assume would include the retaining wall. Is the retaining wall in or is that what is proposed?
It should have been on the hardscape. For the pool.
It's not.
Correct, oh, yeah, it's not. It's not constructed yet.
So we'll definitely need a topography sheet, one that shows any type of changes to topography. We also, I think we discussed at the pre-coming, would like to see a table listing all the accessory structures on the property and all the sizes of those to make sure that it stays within the 1,500 square feet, that I don't believe.
Well, we pulled the, we pulled the garage off of the site plans for the original applications. We had both of them in. So we removed that and said we're going to focus on this. And then at some point when we get back to the septic system, because apparently there was some questions about septic being four bedrooms as opposed to five bedrooms, because you, this was labeled as a bedroom in your variants, right? The building, the course of health does not label it as a bedroom.
Right, so I'm, yeah, so I'm not talking about the bedrooms. I'm just saying that we needed to know the total square footage of accessory structures on the property, so that would include the.
So right now, this is the, what you have right now is the garage, the home, exactly what you see on the plans. Nothing is, and there's nothing proposed to make it larger in the future?
No, no, I understand. We need to know the square footage of the existing garage and what the square footage of the pool house would be, because there are zoning requirements.
And they're not on these plans? I thought they updated them.
I'll have to look again. I didn't see them. I'll take another look. But, and you can, you'll get my notes. You can look as well.
Okay, perfect.
And if they are there, you can just write back a comment saying you can find them on the sheet.
I thought, I thought last, the last set of plans that I printed out had them updated for you.
It may be, then I just missed it. It's a blur.
Is there another, I thought you meant for T-Chip, sorry.
No, 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 just to make sure you're consistent with the code today. I didn't know the imperatives for what you're proposing here.
Okay.
Just need to double check that. I didn't see any lighting shows on it, shown on the exterior of the pool house, so if there's any proposed lighting, that should be shown. We should see a cut of that and any locations of where that would be. I would typically talk about this with other applicants, typically they have lighting around doors.
That pretty much should be on the Wagner and Hutchins draft?
I did look, I didn't see it, but I'll take another look. And again, if you can do that as well, we'll figure that out and see what the deal is. The retaining wall is nine feet in height. That is actually an issue, because anything over six feet, which consists of a solid fence or wall that does not allow for the passage of use, needs a special use permit from the planning board. So the retaining wall, we need a special use permit review. The other question I think.
What's the, on the retaining wall?
Well, anything six feet.
Anything above six feet?
Or that doesn't allow the passage of use and is a retaining wall, obviously there's no passage of use. But a wall of, they all kind of come as the same thing as the code. And again, you'll get my notes, you can check that section. It's 4.5, 38. Another question I had was just related to, I'm not quite on sheets. The retaining wall itself looked like it actually went into the building. Yeah, so I just wanted to ask a question. Here it, it looks like, I was just looking for clarification, it looks like the retaining wall is actually built into the building itself, but if you look at the others, it shows wood siding kind of going all the way down to the ground, so I didn't know. If you could just clarify what the plan was there?
Okay, I can clarify that with Peak. It went back and forth a bit because there was a lot of rock there. And we weren't sure if we were going to try and stabilize it with rock or how to do, can we go all the way down? So that's something I can clarify.
Yes, there, there need to be some type of clarification on the plans, then if, if the wall is still built into the building, that we're not showing wood siding and that retaining wall area. Again, just another clarification. Couple more. If the retaining wall is to service the surround from the pool, it needs to be near state code requirements with general closure. So we would just need a note on the plans stating that, that retaining wall will serve as state code for the pool and will need those state code. I'm not going to review for the state code, but it should have that note on the plans.
Okay, and that's simply, if that, that's with fencing as well, correct?
That would be anything, yeah, anything for the surroundings. Yeah, they just want that on label on there. You know, you know about the Texas County Department of Health approval? We'll be going through that already.
I met with David on Friday last week.
Pool mechanical system, I think should be labeled, just so we know what it is on the plans. I don't think it actually had a label.
The pool equipment?
Yeah.
Okay, that has already been permitted, so I need to go back to NeJAM for the pool itself?
No, it just needs to be labeled on the plans.
On for the pool house plans?
Yeah, I think they, I think they should be. I think, you know, everything typically wants all existing conditions shown and anything that's proposed to be labeled, so you know what it is in the future. So if we go back in five years, I don't know if you guess what it is. Do a site visit to figure it out. Couple more. The pavers that you're proposing, I was just wondering if these are proposed to be pervious, if water's going to go through those, or if you're proposing drainage tile or something to that effect, which then goes back to the discussion I had about topography. We want to make sure that anything related to drainage is draining properly and the topography is associated with that. I didn't see a note, I couldn't tell. I didn't see anything that looked like.
Where the drains?
That they drain in, in the papers here, so I'd have this proposed sheet flow off or, going themselves. So some clarification on what's proposed for the runoff, because it is a pretty significant amount of papers here, it would be good. The next two are related to lighting. There is a proposal shown on the plans for stream lighting, stream lights between the house and the garage. Typically, there's something people put up afterwards, but I don't know how the planning board wants to address those. They don't meet the requirements for shielded lighting, but the code does provide the exemption for lighting that is considered landscape design element, integral to the aesthetic, aesthetic value of the design as determined by the planning board. And the other lighting issue is I believe that there were lights proposed to be strapped to the trees. We did discuss this with an application once before, it's not well received by the board, I guess is maybe fair to say. So I thought that was an item to bring up that you may want to consider.
Are those the solar ones? The trees are solar?
That may be. Just the idea of light strapped to trees was, was a consideration in the discussion we had before, that, that would be for the board to discuss. And then the other comment I had is just that the, so the garage is off the plate as a potential for accessory structure, but the, this is for the board to decide as well. The pool house is proposed, has a living area, kitchenette, changing room, full bathroom. So I did want to bring up again the idea that we see often, that it could potentially be considered to be a bedroom or a living area. They have a note on here saying that it is proposed to have a seasonal mini-split system that will be winterized, so it would not be used year-round based on that note. But that did catch my eyes, the potential, and certainly something we want to discuss. So that is my long list of questions I have, and I'll try to move on.
Okay, planning board members, comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. We had a number of, I know, discussions, you and I and Ed, about the, the pool house. Given that it has pulled out the facilities, kitchen facilities, it could easily be used as a bedroom, certainly needs the building permit for that. And the planning board made a decision that we wish that could do that. I know I feel that it should be true, in fact, because it varies to be used as a guest facility. And I guess one of the problems was that in the existing septic system, there was an 85 gallon capacity of what's already being used by the existing housing, whatnot, which if it were not to be considered potential bedroom area, it could overnight use, it would be permitted by the health department. If indeed it could be used as an overnight facility, it would require 110 gallons, which is what the new septic system is going to be, was apparently redesigned for the, and for the garage, which we have two different.
Correct.
So when we last discussed that, my understanding was what we were looking at tonight would be the hardscaping, the fencing, so the pool could be all put in, whatnot, so that the kids are allowed to swim in the pool in the summer. And then once the new septic system is designed and prepared to afford the garage, then the pool house would be constructed. I see that there's been some change in that part of the coaching system.
Am I entitled to put a Pharaoh on the phone who's doing the septic? Who, who met with Dave and I?
I guess the one thing I would say is that it's not Dave's decision, or the engineer's decision as to whether or not that's considered a bedroom. Okay? It's that either the zoning administrator and or the planning board, according to zoning law, can make that determination based about what's being presented. So, and then when we tell them what it is, then they design the battle.
Okay, understood. My understanding on Friday was we had his blessing as far as the existing septic system, but I can confirm that and get that, you know, blocking my.
I would, I spoke today, and he said if we consider potential bedroom, could be used as a bedroom, 85 gallons will not suffice, so we'll have to be in over 110 gallons.
And that was after you and I spoke?
That was a call I made today, because I asked him about that. Would he be willing to give some sort of temporary? He said, no, they can't do that.
Okay. So the septic is basically in question on the 85 to the 110 foot?
Correct.
And that would be for the pool house itself?
Correct. Not for the hardscaping. The hardscaping, I think, we all agree, that could go forward, the fencing for the pool, the pool of courses under construction or can be, is already permitted, so that the pool would be available this summer.
So the hardscaping is the lighting issues and, and the pool house is the septic?
I think that would probably be the smartest way to deal with it, unless you need any lighting facilities for the pool area. And then that, of course, with the hardscaping, should go forward, yes.
We have eight hands in the pot, as you know.
Oh, I, I understand.
Several designers and engineers and so.
But I would mention, I know that Jim brought it up, as far as our lighting is concerned, any lighting fixture has to be fully shielded, so that you cannot see the source of the light, the bulb. If they're putting lights up in trees, very often you look up everywhere to see the bulb, and that would be a violation of our lighting code.
Other planning board members?
I just would like a slight comment, I guess, about it. Conceptually speaking, if there wasn't a, a full bathroom on the interior, just an exterior shower, we would, we would potentially be more accommodating to the idea that it's on accessory structure?
It's possible that it also has a kitchen in there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Also, if the septic's getting upgraded, that makes a lot of sense.
The way, the way the code is written, the planning board would have to decide that as a group, here at a, at a public meeting, of whether or not you decide as a group, you know, which, which way to fall.
We are working with the engineer and O'Farrell, earthworks, on expanding the septic system and the leach field. We have it, you know, we've done site meetings, we, we're aware of the situation. My understanding was that this was okay, but Michael made the call today, so I can follow up now with everybody in the morning and make sure that, you know, we get kind of.
Are they discussing extending the existing septic? Because we were told at that meeting that because of the way it's dammed in by clay and whatnot to try and.
That's what the site meeting was with, with, with the engineer and O'Farrell and Mr. Pearson on Friday afternoon.
Now, can it extend it?
There, I, I'm not really sure what exactly came above, about it, because it was more towards the garage, carriage house, whatever we're going to call it.
That was for the new system, that was moving the code, which was going to.
Yeah. So I'm not sure if we're just doing the whole or we're expanding each one. Yeah, of course, of course. I think that that was what we were going back and forth on, whether we needed to, or, and then the sight lines, you know, how close are we to the properties? You know, we, we had surveyed again to, you know, there's stone walls on the property, where can we move the leach field, or where can we put the septic system? So that's been kind of a big coordination all last week with meeting all different engineers, architects, designers, designers, carpenters, contractors.
Anyone else?
Could you describe how the wall works around the pool area?
This, right here?
Yeah. This on an elevation, right?
No.
Yeah, sort of. I mean, one of the. It, it kind of shows you here. This is the base grade, they have stairs.
So does the wall extend above the pavers around the pool?
No.
So.
Only the retaining wall or the, the planter walls? The retaining walls, on the back side.
Wouldn't this be the level of the pool? If that you're here.
Yes.
So this retaining wall would extend above it from, from this side.
From the back, yes.
And the stair side, it is actually just above grade here. This is grade here. I'm not sure what happens when we get further away from the pool house. We don't have that much.
I think that's what they're working with the rock, yeah, so.
And that's where the topography becomes so important to know and see what the elevation changes are.
Okay. Ideally, in an ideal world, we'd like to not have that back there, but because of the way the land slopes down, it's kind of a necessary, we don't have the earth working with us, it's working against us. There's a lot of water off of that back, hill, whatever you want to call it. Yeah, so that's what they're working against right now, and I think that's why that was proposed in there. But again, these are questions that they can answer, and I'm here representing them.
I was going to say that, you know, if we accept the application this evening, when you come back for public hearing, you might want to bring some of your technical experts with you, because, you know, it's unfair to be asking me these questions, and they might have the answers. Because it's obviously a big team effort, and sometimes everybody doesn't know all the information.
Ed, I can tell you, based on the elevation, some, to some degree here, this is nine feet on the edge of the building. How that plays out as you get further back, I don't know what the topography is, but that's what it was showing on the elevation, is it's nine feet in this area. I, I don't know how it changes, I can say it's.
It should slope down if the rock works with us, but we'll see.
So it gets taller as you get away from the.
No, slopes down. It should go down. Yeah, right now, that, that's what they're jacking it right now, right now, to try and see where we can make it happen.
So all the other planes, what did I need a fence as well?
We're preparing to have a fence, whether we need one or not, just because they have two small children and safety for many reasons. So it's, that's prepared, and that should be on the plan with Hutchins and Wagner and Hutchins' latest draft or blueprint.
So work is going on now?
Just the pool. We're only allowed to do the pool right now.
So the jackhammering that you're talking about is relative to the pool?
Yeah. So this right here, right here is where the stone wall is, and it comes down like this on this side. So that's what they're trying to work with, because.
Did you say stone wall, an existing stone wall or natural stone?
No, it's, it's, what we thought was slate, but it's not, it's bluestone and quartz. It's really, really difficult. And can't blast because we're so close to the house, obviously, and the house is all glass, so they're chipping slowly, and we can't pour the last of the wall on the pool side because the stone is posing an issue. So depending on how far they get down, that's my last understanding with, with NeJAM, with Steve O'Brien and Colin and Liam O'Farrell, is that's going to determine a lot for us.
So do note on here, just as I mentioned, this does show a perimeter trench drain, which means the water's going to run to here, but I don't actually see on the plans any pipes for where that would go, so that's something we want to see. Again, all that placing the topography.
I feel like there was a proposal in here somewhere with the trenching, with the three, the three steps down, but perhaps not.
We'll go back to the local county as well. If you don't say the difficulty, we can answer those in a little while.
Sure. Anyone else?
One question I have, some of the system, this is seasonal, does that mean it's only going to provide air conditioning?
That I, I couldn't answer, but I would assume so, because they don't, they only come for summer, so this is a seasonal house for them, so. I would, I would assume that we're going to winterize the pool house for the season, because we're going to winterize the pool, it's not a year-round pool, so it would be unnecessary to use the pool house at that. But I can clarify that as well. That's Peak, is that, is that on Peak's plans?
Don't remember exactly what it is.
I, I think we're picking up from Jim's notes.
Okay, I can clarify that with Peak, because they put them in there. That was the assumed system, because of the location, and originally they wanted to do like a geothermal system for the whole thing, but it didn't work out that we could do that. So I think that it was the proposal. I will find out if it's heat and, I know that we are winterizing it because they do not come out in winter months, so I know that's a fact.
This, this is where I found it, just a note on the plans. I didn't have any of these.
Yes, to be winterized. Can I go clarify?
Anyone else? Okay, Jim, I believe we have a draft procedural resolution.
For the board's consideration tonight, a draft procedural resolution for Laura Sullivan for the construction of a pool house associated site changes of 127 Hilltop Road. Accepting the application, supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public. Plusifying the action is type two under seeker. We'll send this to the C A B for review. Because of the site plan, it will go to the county planning department for review. We will schedule a public hearing for.
April 3rd?
3rd, yes.
April 3rd, and we designate two planning board members per site.
Okay.
Well, okay.
Does that mean I need you on site? Is that what that means? Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion and a second, please, to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Delise. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Motion carries. Delise and or Craig will be in touch with you to settle the meeting.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And Jim will provide you with his list of.
Okay, you'll email that?
You'll get it from Gretchen.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Happy birthday, have a good night.
I would assume, I mean, determine whether it can be considered a bedroom or not after any information, is that?
Yes, that would be something we discussed in the hearing, I think. We'll have to decide that. But of course, that ties into some discussion in the county health, I think.
Okay, next up, under new applications, the village of Grand Beck, 282308, site plan review for a composted site. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to come up and share with everybody what you would like to do.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. Happy birthday, Jim. It's my son's birthday and my sister's birthday, so I always feel a little. So my name's Vanessa Bertozzi, and I'm a trustee on the village board, and I'm a coordinator for our Climate Smart Communities Task Force. One of the projects that we've been working on here diligently for the past few years is food waste, which is a, which is a major issue. And I'm here tonight representing the village in our goal to construct a permanent compost facility at the highway department property, which is owned by the village, of course, but located within the town on 308 and also on Violet Hill Road. And I'm joined with Brandy Nelson from the engineering firm Tyne Bond. She'll be presenting some more details. I'm here just to introduce the project as a real community effort to reduce waste and reduce gases in our area. The facility will be using an A S P system, which is arid static pile, which is a very low labor and low odor system for processing food waste. We have already received a registration from the D E C Division of Materials Management approving the site plan as proposed to you as well. And we are in talks with the county, since Violet Hill Road is a county road, and working on easements to be able to clear sightlines by that driveway to make it better for, better access. So I also just wanted to publicly thank my, my compost subcommittee, my volunteers who have worked on this project with me for many years, and we're coming here tonight. This is, this has really been a community effort, and we're very proud to say that we have received $300,000 in grant money to be able to construct this facility. So I'll hand it over to Brandy to give you some more in the public detail. Thank you, Vanessa.
Good evening, everyone. For your record, I'm Brandy Nelson. I'm a professional engineer with Tyne Bond, working with the village of Grand Beck on their compost facility, which really, for those of you who are familiar with the site, is an extension of what you've been doing for many years with yard waste mulch. If you have driven around the village, you've seen piles of yard waste mulch in the roadside, and the village for many years has had a really aggressive program for picking that up as a village service, taking it to this location, mulching it, and then making it available to the community for use. One thing Vanessa didn't mention that her and the task force have been working on is the, the idea to expand into food scrap composting has been born out of both study and pilot testing over the last, is it three years, two years? Two years, yeah. So the village has really done their homework about whether or not it made sense to expand into the food scrap composting. They'd be able to offer up food-based composting to village residents, to the school, and to local food service businesses, thereby diverting that material from landfills. And because of the longstanding mulch project, there's a lot of brown materials to be added to the green materials and create compost. So the improvements that are proposed for the site are really limited to four main things. One is a, a small bin to accept food scraps from the public. The second is a, an area to bulk those food scraps every night with some bulking agent, which would be some of the mulch material. And then third is the arid static piles here, based on the. Based on the study that we've done so far, it looks like we'd be constructing one aerated static pile per week. And then it takes several weeks of that aeration process to biologically break down the material into a stable compost project. And then once that stable compost is done with the active composting process, it would go into a finished compost storage facility where the community could come back and pick that up for use in gardens or local landscape projects. And that'd be here. As you know, there's already a driveway off of Violet Hill Road that is used by the D P W. We've talked with the county about the change in use of that driveway to allow the public to access the facility site. And we measured for site distances. The site distances can be met. However, there is a little property issue with our neighbor here to the south. They have a little corner of land that is outside of the, or inside, it protrudes into the county's right away. So the county doesn't have rights to clear that land. So the village has been working with that landowner to get an easement to be able to maintain the pressure at that location, which will allow the site distance to be met. Other than that, the village would be extending both water and electric service back to the site so that we've got water for wetting the compost piles or maintenance of the compost path and also electric to power the blowers. So I'm happy to take any questions if there's anything that I missed. Vanessa did mention the registration process with the D E C. D E C has setback for plans and things of that nature that they want met from environmental resources and also from budding properties. The, I can't remember the name of the rep from D E C that you were working with, but he came out to the site, took a look at it, and walked the village through the registration process. The county is not requiring a permit, so as far as I can tell, you guys are the only entity that would issue a site plan proposal. I don't believe there are any other permits that are required. And I believe we submitted, Jim, for your purposes, a short form with the application materials. Jim?
A couple of questions. The first one, the water line. Is there water at the road underneath?
There is.
So you're just tapping into the water?
That's correct.
I did take a look at this. As noted, there's a lot of details on the operational aspects in the D E C Materials Management paperwork that was submitted. I took a look at the location. It's over 100 feet from Landsman Kill. And the compost pad is actually over 200 feet away from it, so we don't have any buffer area issues there. And we may have discussed this in the pre-con meeting. I don't remember if there's a proposal for a sign. I didn't see one on here. I'm guessing you're not going to have one, but if you wanted a new sign up there, we would have to talk about that as a permit.
If there was going to be any signage, there might be something on the face of the gate that is currently there just indicating what hours the gate is open for accepting food waste. But there's not proposed to be any pre standing sign protruding into the right way.
If we did want to have a pre standing sign, that would be a separate permit.
You'd have to get a signed permit.
Signed permit.
And no way finding signs internal to the property?
I don't think so. It's not very big. It's pretty, it'll be pretty clear. And there'll be some highway department official that would be, or highway department staff that would be present while people are there on site. I don't know that we nailed down hours of operation, but it'd be limited. It's not going to be a free call or people can come up with anything they want.
We're thinking that for the public, we'll have other collection bins as locations. So this isn't going to be like the primary place where people are bringing food scraps. But, but yeah, but signage, educational signage would be good as well. You know, say which types of foods. It's all food scraps, but you know, not compostable takeout containers. That's, yeah.
Anyone finish?
Yep, just a couple others. The walls, the fencing that's in there, is any of it over six feet in height? Are we talking about concrete walls?
No, we're just talking like bin blocks, like maybe two courses of bin blocks.
And how high are those?
I think they're two feet each, so about four feet. The D E C's regulations don't allow you to accumulate large quantities of material. So we're looking at like a half cubic yard or less of material at any one time. So it's just an area to make sure it doesn't like get away from the containment.
The last question I just had is about the finished compost storage area or any of them. Are there any roofed structures proposed on any of this? The finished compost storage, I was kind of supposed to fill a block. I didn't know if that was proposed to be roofed or the compost pad would have a roof over it.
Well, so we're, finished compost storage, we probably would tarp if need be, but no roof structure. The compost pad, we'd like to put a shed style roof on if budget allows. It's kind of a, if budget allows, sort of thing.
So how does that play into our roof accessory structures if it, because it won't have walls, right?
It would be, if you could have a style.
How would, Michael, how do you think that would relate to our accessory?
Roof accessory structure, but I'm wondering, in the civic area, because there's those eight questions at the end with that thing about civic project and civic areas, whether or not we actually, aspects of our zoning law would apply to this or should apply to this, if these things create an issue or a problem, so that they should apply to this. And that could be a situation where you would have to, you know, I was about to add, saying, no, I think it makes good sense. I think a roof over it, you know, compost, you want to control the moisture and things like that.
Yeah, I agree. And there are only a couple of structures on the site, but again, want to make sure we're, we're, basically by code.
Would be the sort of thing that we would probably determine is not something we need to be concerned with.
Well, I think it makes sense. So I'll look into that. You'll get my questions.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask if there's a section we could refer to.
You'll get a copy of my notes so we can work through this.
Okay, great.
Now, we, I don't believe, I worked quickly, but I don't believe we have anything in here that will show us what it will actually look like in elevation. Is that?
No, we don't.
Is that something that you think the public might be interested in seeing or seeing, though, and what it's going to look like from the road?
They might, they might.
I'll follow through to this house.
Yeah, okay, the watching the road.
I know in the pre conference meeting, we did talk about, you know, what people will be seeing from the road. So if you can give us some sort of visual and maybe some photographs, I think we talked about that as well. Maybe, you know, if you can get some photographs as you're coming down Violet Hill, so we'll see how it's going to sit on the property for the public hearing. There may be people from in the audience who, you know, want to know that.
So when you're coming down Violet Hill, there is a house right here. It's a house of garage or maybe two garages. So, so I was actually looking at it on Friday. And it's, the leaves are off right now, so that's good. It provides significant blockage. You do see sort of like, sort of speckling through, you can see what's going on. But, but over here, where the compost facility is, there's over 300 feet of woods. And so it's very dense. You don't see anything from that angle.
Well, that's great. Just show us some photographs that document that.
Okay.
As you're talking, I'm thinking, well, maybe the people in the house will want to know what it's going to look like. So I think it's just... Much more helpful to give that information out there early rather than to, you know, if you have it and you present that at the next meeting, then it might answer everybody's questions. Other planning board members?
There's a blower, I guess, for aerating the compost. Is that on some sort of a timer or does it only function during daylight hours?
The details are still in design, but it would function on a cyclical basis, on and off. And typically, the blowers, just because we're concerned about noise, would be in little housings to dampen any noise from them.
I'd be curious, the village would maintain this facility and this, and then the people being there in the village board?
Yeah, so this would be part of the responsibilities of our village highway department with our current staff. The same gentleman who manages mulch deliveries today would be trained to, there's specific trainings you can take for this type of composting procedure. So he would take that training and be, you know, the main point person. But we are in discussions with the town board because we want this to be a facility that can be used townwide. So we're talking to the town board about sharing the operational costs and actually getting enough upfront capital to build the facility.
So as it stands right now, without an agreement with the town, will this only be available to village residents?
Yeah. With one caveat, which is that there are pollers in the area who you can contract with as a private resident and enter into the system through that.
Just a question from, now this question, because it would be just for village use at this time, does that mean the schools are also exempt until agreed with the town? Or given that village and township will use the schools, do the schools participate in that?
I'm so excited to get the school district on board. I really hope. I actually have a meeting with Elbra Cousins later this week. So, but you know, nothing's set in stone yet. But really, I think what we're talking about is just getting started now. And then I think as we become more established, hoping, you know, more restaurants will take part and maybe book meet, other institutional partners. But yeah, until we have a signed inter municipal agreement, it's, it would just be the village, yeah.
Well, I'd be curious, if we were to, to understand, because usage definitely is an important aspect of how we help this site potentially. Would they have to come back in front of us if we were to increase the usage of a substantial amount? Because the town is much bigger than ours.
Correct.
Something to consider with the houses around it. I mean, not that on the floor, but I think it would be good for them to at least know what potential is for.
I'll bring a suggestion. Okay. So the, the village is limited by two different factors as far as expansion. One is a regulatory factor. So the D E C only allows certain thresholds for registration. Beyond that, you have to be a permitted facility. It's a much more complicated process. It's more like what U C R does across the river, if you've ever been over to their facilities. It's a full-scale like operation and everybody there is dedicated just to composting. So I think that's one thing to keep in mind. The other thing is that the village right now is kind of in their sweet spot of brown and green based on the calculations that we put together for them and the studies they've done. And so to expand, they would have to not only expand food collection, but also expand wood mulch collection. And right now, they're only collecting in the village. So I think that's, that's part of the rationale for starting in the village. Vanessa and her team have done a huge amount of surveying and they did a pilot test trying to figure out who would actually participate. And they think they've got enough people. And we know we have enough ground to do this small amount. So it's, we kind of need to like step into the water and see how well received it is in the community.
I was thinking that Sean's question was more along the lines, correct me if I'm wrong, that let's assume that you get your inter municipal agreement and you can get a book meet or a hospital on board. Does that then lead to needing to expand capacity? And the question would be, do you then have to come back before us? And I think the answer would be yes. You would have to come back.
Yeah. If, if expanding capacity would mean increasing the footprint of what we're doing, but the design that we're proposing gives us room to expand within this current footprint. Because the way, yeah, just the scale of it is designed for that amount of wiggle room. Yeah.
That, that to where you wanted to hit? Anyone else?
You mentioned collection points in the village. Can you use working like these?
Yeah. So we are currently talking to the farmer's market about having bins there. I mean, I think that would be a really obvious and wonderful solution. For our pilot, where we had 100 households participating, we had bins set up in the municipal parking lot right over here. It's behind village hall, behind the police department. And it actually worked really well. It was very discreet. And we didn't have any problems with it at all. We would also love, if, again, if the town can come on board, maybe there's a collection bin at the town transfer station, another kind of no brainer place for it. Or maybe there was a collection bin in Rhine Cliff, another dense area where people, maybe can't be composting in their own backyard, for instance. That's just the way that we're thinking. I think it will, we'll try to find those, those good places where people are already going so they don't have to go out of the way.
Does this need to be fenced off or protected against, you know, raccoons or bears or vultures?
Yeah, thank you for that question. The way that we intend to manage it with this A S P system, imagine that you're bringing in a littered bin of food scraps. And then as soon as that's coming into the property, you're laying out a whole kind of bed, like a little bed of wood chips. The food scraps get put on that bed. And then immediately you have a front end loader bringing some mulch and incorporating it into a larger pile. So, and then that pile is sort of insulated with a layer of mulch. The aeration is bringing the temperature up to 140 degrees. And so that temperature actually deters a lot of the vermin. And the temperature is also biophilic. So the aerobic digestion is happening in such a way that it's not rotting. And the rotting is what attracts animals and creates odor.
And that's where you get the methane.
Right, yeah.
Thanks.
There are no more questions. Jim, we have a draft procedural resolution.
For the board's consideration tonight, a draft procedural resolution for the village of Rhine Cliff Compost Center for the construction slash addition of the compost facility at the village of Rhinebeck Highway Department property, 282 group 308, accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for further review by the board, its advisors and public, classify the action as type two under seeker. We'll send this to the C A B for review. It will go to county planning since there's a site plan review. Schedule a public hearing for April 3rd. And we need two planning board members to do a site review.
I will go.
Anything else?
All right. So may I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved.
Second, Delise. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, the motion ends. All right, thank you. We'll be in touch. And Edna and Sean will schedule a time to do a visit. And we'll see you in a month.
Great. Thank you so much.
We will pass 615, so we can move into the public hearing portion of this evening's meeting. First public hearing is a new boy, heights on the Hudson, walk this road, site plan review, and special use permit for renovations.
Would you like to make like a summary of the project? So this is a project at 12 Walk This Road in Rhine Cliff. It is a existing structure that, the beginning of it, of the structure was back around 1870 as a rectory for the adjacent church. The building has been added onto through the years and is currently vacant for the last few years. It's in very poor condition currently. And it's going to be, or that proposal is to renovate the structure into a residence, a single family residence. And it's a major undertaking that is going to require kind of removing, you know, a lot of material back down to mostly the framing and foundation of the structure just due to the condition of the existing building. And the additions that were off the front and back of the original footprint are being removed. And there's a new addition off the back and also a new addition, a single story to the northeast side. The, yeah, the house, you know, the design is seeking to... Um, the, yeah, the house, you know, um, the design is seeking to, um, bring back a lot of the original features of the, the original structure. So, um, we did our best to kind of research the history and windows are generally kept in the original locations with some enlargements that were made selectively. Um, and, yeah, I think that's, I guess, we're all a bit free.
Jim, it doesn't look like you have any new comments?
I don't have any comments, no.
Okay, um, site visit report.
Um, I went to the site with Michael and we walked inside the house and around it to the degree that you can get around it. Uh, it tends to occupy a lot more of the site, uh, that is, uh, than, than what is accessible, because it's kind of cantilevered off of the cliff. Um, and a lot of the access blocks are a little bit dodgy, rotted, wooden cauzae and that sort of thing, and, uh, dodgy staircases. The additions that are being demolished don't seem to be contributing much to the integrity of the historic building. They seem to be later, uh, non-sympathetic additions and they're in poor condition. Um, they seem to have not lasted as, uh, as well as the, uh, the more robust core of the house. And I think that's the more interesting part of it as well. Um, and a lot of the, uh, features of the house are obscured by aluminum siding and vinyl siding. And so it's kind of hard to see what's going on or what's supposed to be going on. Um, but it, um, it does need some help and I know that, um, the, uh, the kitchen addition is going to take the place of the, um, north-facing, um, bay window that's, um, off of the north end there, uh, which, which kind of has its partner on the south side. And, um, yeah, I mean, there, there are a lot of little surprises on the interior. Very nice staircase, uh, and a lot of remnants of, uh, what would have been a 19th century, uh, parish house or, uh, and that, I, I think, did you, were you ever able to get an attribution of the, like, who, who the architect was, who designed it?
Not the house. We know, we have the church, um, but not the house itself.
Right. Because I think the church is George Beich.
Correct, yes.
And Beich, I think, is also responsible for the Rhine Cliff and several other houses in the Rhine Cliff area. And according to what I read, he was brought over, uh, to, uh, to build Wincliffe, the, the great old game rec on River Road. So there's a, a lot of interesting, um, background there that I, I think can be, um, brought to light.
Yeah, yeah, I wondered if, if he might have been involved with this house, though. We don't have record of that. Um, there's also, there's a road on River Road that was built right around the same time, that there's a lot of very similar details, especially the stairways, mistakenly, so it seems like there's some relationship there.
All right. And I, I think this, this is a specifically listed local landmark. So it's, you know, it's worthy of careful treatment and, you know, I think, uh, pouring research and, and time into it is going to be well worthwhile and it's going to end up being a net contribution to the fabric of Rhine Cliff.
Absolutely. Yeah, I should, that reminds me, I should say, the, the interior stairways, we are, um, I need to preserve that and restore it. Um, and also, I, I realize I didn't say that, um, since our last visit, we had the Phase 1 and A and 1B archaeological, archaeological survey done. Um, they gave us an end of field work report where they, they said they didn't find anything that was going to affect the historic artifacts and were expecting to have the full report sometime probably this week. So we'll submit that as soon as we know it.
Michael?
Yeah, Craig's saying, I think it's obviously a very significant house and it's probably the, one of the most beautiful building plots in Rhine Cliff. I hope they're really good. And you can see the, the things that have been torn down, the first curling on the windows between the walls and everything were done. It's two things that could get away with it. Some of them are even foundations collapsing, things are sort of tilted and whatnot. But the house is still straight. And the house, just removing them is going to be a tremendous benefit for the proportion of this structure in the look of it. Um, I think they're proposing to put the new front porch back on, which was a significant defining characteristic in the pictures that we do have of this back before all these things happened to it. It was really quite elegant. And, um, I think if they can work, you know, carefully, you know, I think it can be helpful. I think the, the will is there to do it. And, um, I think if they are successful, it's going to be a tremendous benefit to Rhine Cliff. What this thing was was a horrific hellhole and this is going to be a 100% degree improvement. It's well worth, well worth doing, lots of people are willing to do it. They don't know that I would. It's quite a, quite a challenge. But it is, it is a beautiful, nice, beautiful house.
Thank you. Uh, other planning board members?
Just extremely handsome. Looking forward to seeing it eventually.
Anyone else? All right, um, is there anyone here from the public who'd like to comment on this application? Richard?
I'd like to say what Michael said.
Okay.
No, um, this is amazing. I, uh, I, I can't believe it's, that's there. Could you, I, I, I'm Richard Kopashansky, I live in Michael. Okay. It really looks wonderful. I, uh, it, it's been a terrible I saw for many, many years. It was owned by somebody who didn't want to put anything back into it, obviously. Um, just a couple of questions. I, you know, in some of the pictures, there's some, um, really ugly looking, um, fire escapes and things. Are you, will, will they be taken, taken down and de-done somehow? Or do you have need of fire escapes?
They'll be, they won't be.
Uh huh. And, and will you have a, um, will, it, it looks like it's going to be a metal roof?
Yes.
Yeah? What I see there is just so, as you said, I mean, it's so wonderfully to bring that back. It's a, that's a, that's a pretty decent project you're putting upon yourself and I really respect it. It looks great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Who do you think?
Hi. Andrew Shepherd, I live in Rhine Cliff. I've been walking by that vest for 20 years. The dogs like a lot of them. Uh, and everyone I've spoken to is thrilled about this and they've seen the plans. It's great. Welcome to Rhine.
Um, we have a secret report from both the CAB and HAPAC. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there were no concerns raised?
CABWAC had no issues. I think HAPAC had a couple of thoughts for consideration, but no issues overall. And then we're looking forward to the Phase 1 and 1B.
Okay. Well, are we ready to close the public hearing? Is there anyone else here? Let me double check.
It looks like you can help me with that.
I, I don't have in front of me what their questions were, because you...
I, I think, I, I recall, uh, they, they did raise the issue that I raised as well, uh, some concerns about that, uh, that north-facing bay window.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and also the architect had mentioned the prospect of changing the, um, the aspect of some of the arch windows on the side. And, and these seem to be, you know, unlike the, um, the additions, which kind of obliterated a lot of the historic detail and it's hard to tell what survives under that, these seem to be surviving elements of the historic building. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I would suggest care in how that gets handled. Because it's, it's one thing to, you know, kind of artificially go back and try to recreate what was there, either conjecturally or by comparing it to surrounding buildings. Yet another thing to take something that, that survived the onslaught of all of these crazy additions that were put on and to make changes to that for, um, reasons other than those that are absolutely necessary. And I think that as, as HAPAC pointed out, if you, if you have a, a compelling reason for changing the size of those upstairs arch windows for egress or something like that, then, then that would kind of offset the, um, the, the need to keep it in the same, uh, aspect and scale that it's found to be in.
Is that under consideration or where are we in that?
Um, so we, we have considered that and, uh, you know, the, um, that was carefully studied in the design. Um, and they were enlarged intentionally because of, uh, you know, the views and light that they bring in to that interior space. The, the original windows were, um, mostly the front window, um, was smaller. Actually, I have the sizes here. Um, so these, the side windows were, were, uh, two feet by five feet roughly. Um, and were, um, our proposed window sizes are 32 inches by five foot six, so about eight inches wider and six inches taller. Um, and then the front window was 18 inches wide and 40 inches tall. So a pretty small window and a pretty low and you couldn't, it, it kind of doesn't proportionally work that great as a window. And so that one we were proposing enlarging to that same size. So they all, all of those arch windows are the same size. So, uh, we felt like it was a, you know, uh, it is a change from the original, um, but we were trying to do it intentionally in a way that still fits in and is in keeping with the style of the house and the overall look and would be, you know, would call our attention to itself, hopefully.
Um, thank you. Reuben, uh, you notice that the chair of the CAB is here. Do you wish to comment or?
Glad to be, Reuben LeParker, Conservation Advisory Board Chair. Uh, I was not able to attend the site visit, but I do understand that, uh, there's a lot of compliments as well for the, uh, for the owner to be undertaking the historic renovation. Uh, one question I have is, um, was there any consideration given for getting historic, um, recognition for the house?
It's already recognized.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, it is registered. There, there's no public funding as a part of the project or anything that would like require another layer of historic review or, or, or detail.
Well, and to some extent, uh, understanding the process, the, the fact that this building was allowed to deteriorate to the extent that it was and to be compromised in a way it was could have led to removal from, from status. So the reversal of this is to be applauded. Um, and I think it will certainly receive local recognition just by virtue of being brought back into a better state of repair. And, um, my only opinion is, and I, I, I certainly understand and appreciate the comments from HAPAC, but in my opinion, the, um, the good things that are happening outweigh the modest changes that, um, will, will, will result from the work that's being proposed. But I think on balance, um, there's far more good going on than the compromising of those particular two aspects that, that Craig spoke of. That's my opinion.
I, from my reading of the HAPAC letter, it seemed to have a similar, um, take that, that there are some aspects that would be more ideal to be done differently, but the balance...
Well, I think their job is to point out to us where a particular proposal deviates from what would be the ideal scenario. And we appreciate the fact that they're diligent about that, but it's our job to weigh all of those factors. I don't want them to think we're disregarding their comments because they're sound. But I think overall, um, the vast improvement, not only of this property, but to Rhine Cliff by extension, I think, is, is to be commended. You want a second, Rhine Cliff?
Oh, yeah, I just have another question. Uh, just because I'm so happy and curious.
Just because you're with us.
Uh, are you, uh, is it, um, is it, will it be clever?
Yes, the siding will be clever.
And do you have to go, uh, how many bedrooms will it be?
Um, so the design is really three bedrooms, but there's a fourth room that is being considered a bedroom for the purpose of septic design.
And it's, and it is a one-family house?
Correct.
And you, do, do you have to go to the Strategic Board of Health for, uh, septic?
Yes, that's in...
You do?
Yeah.
As I understand, because essentially there's no septic there?
It's non-functional, yeah, a non-functional septic.
So you have to say after the...
Yeah.
Thank you for taking this on.
Anyone else? Uh, uh, so Michael's question was, are we comfortable with the, uh, accepting the recommendation, accepting the comments from HAPAC but feeling that we're ready to go ahead? If that's the case, then I think we are ready to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Jim, we have an approval resolution?
I do. We'll have one caveat. It's a little different than most. And that is, I do believe, um, based on what's proposed, that a demolition permit is required to be approved by the planning board for section 125.62. So I have added that in, um, under number three. I don't know if you want to discuss that if everyone agrees. Um, but I did not want to assume approval only the other, but, um, so approval resolution, I can, I guess I'll just go through it and then we can get to, we can talk about number three when I get to it. Um, draft approval res- approval resolution for your consideration for Eileen Tavoy, Heights on Hudson, for site plan, special use permit, for demolition and rehabilitation work as well as associated site changes at 12 Loftus Road, uh, reaffirming the actions type 2 under seeker based upon the information submitted and reviews undertaken, including reports from planning board members HAPAC and CABWAC, finding the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. And then the third item is with respect to the demolition, the demolition of elements specified on the site plan sheet by Deconic Engineering dated December 2022. I'm asking you to find the demolition is acceptable or not and approve or disapprove, I guess, the removal of the proposed elements.
I think what we would do is basically say that we recognize it as an essential element of the condition of the site plan is presented to it from the beginning to now, resumes and then go forward with the demolition of specific aspects. This is undertaken.
Is it a separate demolition permit? That has to be, it has to be. So what we're saying is we recognize...
That it has to happen.
That it has to happen and that we see no problem...
Correct.
With the issuance of a demolition permit.
Right, so you approve removal.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Are we, do we approve it or do we? Because we don't issue the demolition.
I think if we include it, in this approval resolution, we're approving it as part of the project.
Okay, I agree. Just want to make sure the language is correct.
Okay. Um, now we're back to the typical approval resolution with respect to the application for special use permit for rehabilitation work, um, as well as the associated site changes, finding the work intended used to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in Towne Co. Chapter 125 and granting the requested special use permit conditioned upon approval of the site plan. With respect to the application for site plan approval, asking the board to find the proposed work intended used to be consistent with Towne Co. Chapter 125, Section 125.75 and approving it inclusive of the materials in site plan by Deconic Engineering dated December 2022 and authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited plan on the applicant satisfaction of the three criteria shown upon the screen.
Command of a motion, please.
So move.
Second, second, Edna. I'll call the board. Craig?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Police?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Good luck. We'll look forward to your progress. Uh, looking, I've had, uh, you will notice that our last public hearing this evening, Rockledge, has asked to be continued. So in theory, the next, uh, public hearing, Thompson, Mazel tov, uh, is, uh, what will likely, uh, in the set for the time. Uh, Jim, I think you are here representing the town. Is that correct?
Yes. Get an elastic table. I'm going to just come back to my seat here. It's comfortable. So we, I presented this to the board last month. Um, the proposal is to... The proposal is to install three pickleball courts within the park on existing paved area. The idea would be to remove some of the existing pavement to kind of straighten out the corners, put the three pickleball courts there as proposed. This area would remain untouched at the moment and an eight-foot-high fence would be put around the pickleball courts. Based on some of the comments that were received at the last meeting, I did talk with the Town Board representative for this project, who let me know that an eight-foot-high fence is typical for pickleball and that's why it was installed. There was discussion about whether or not it should be taller to match the tennis courts. The eight-foot is the typical installation height. In doing it in a fenced, it would save a little money. If we go back and look at a taller one, it would end up obviously costing a little bit more. So, that was the thought behind it. It's pretty typical. There was a discussion by the planning board about activating the remaining paved space with passive options for seating, other things like that. Again, talking with the Town Board representative on the project, he concurred and he will absolutely bring the recommendation forward to the Town Board for consideration, but they were not considered part of the current submission and weren't budgeted for in this proposal, so the preferred option is to move forward with what's here before the board today and to undertake those as a separate pursuit, as a separate project. The other discussion item that came up at the last meeting was improvements and enhancements to the ball field. Came up from Sean. Sean, can talk with Chauncey. I don't know if you want to discuss that element.
Yeah, I think it's just where they, I spoke with Chauncey, just not just the baseball field in general, but they're doing a lot of major improvements down there, but then there's a lot of infrastructure that has been untouched for fifteen, twenty years and it stands out quite noticeably. One of the things that was requested in that conversation was just more of a master plan. A lot of times when you look at projects, when there's going to be multiple phases to it, which is what they're doing down there, there's more of a master plan that can be commented on and communicated, not only on a public level, but then also on a Town Board level. And one of the things I thought that was really important about that and just kind of referencing back to the hot, the soccer fields, it feels really fun about beforehand, it could have been a multi-use field. It could have been a field that not only contained soccer, but football, field hockey, name it. Now, you know, the lines are part of the turf. It's too late. And so, there's even talk about future of lighting down there where they are very, very old. I mean, if you've seen it, it's, you know, and so it's just like, what is the actual master plan? Is, was, was one of my big requests and I think it's something that Chauncey was, I'm going to go back and he also requested I speak to Josh Pulver a little more about, I'm not trying to be added to some, another board of sorts in this process, but I think it would be really healthy for them to think through that. And in that conversation, one thing I did know is they actually have money and budget that's set aside to re-surface the tennis and the basketball courts, which I thought was really nice, but no one knows that other than the two people working on that committee. And so, the bigger kind of, you know, the outcome of that was, because I think there just needs to be more thought put into this right now. They're kind of, you know, they have a blank piece of paper, they're kind of filling in little areas where things fit. And it's just, so I think long-term, I think it'd be really healthy if they can share a bigger, bigger vision of that area.
This is interesting because there wasn't.
There is, there is an approved master plan.
Is it pickleball court?
No.
That's why they're before us. That is why they're here.
This is an amendment to an approved master plan.
Do we get that?
We have it. It was, so we did talk, we did talk about it with the soccer field moving forward right now.
The master plan goes back a number of years now.
Well, it was originally passed, so they didn't actually begin to do any of the.
Interesting.
And I don't know that they were able to accept, I don't know that they were able to accept funds before they.
No, they did have a master plan because that was.
Interesting. Okay, so not everybody.
So, the interesting thing is not everybody knows there's a master.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And the reason, the reason that they're here is because this is a change to.
An amendment to.
An amendment to an existing master plan. So, you're correct. It would be nice, it would be nice to have understood that more fully and it would be also nice if they would familiarize themselves. Now, there's no reason why they can't up, move forward to update their master plan and it would certainly be better and smarter and more efficient if they were to look at the master plan holistically and decide what changes they wish to make so that when they come in, they're not coming in piecemeal.
Is the state or park coming up eventually?
Correct.
I think, I think a number of things, I was around, you know, I've been around forever, but I was around, Michael and I were around when the master plan was approved and a lot of the things that were talked about at the time have not materialized, including what I believe is going to be a community center and a portion of the property.
That was on the works.
Yeah, and many of, and times have changed and many of the things that were popular and driving the master plan when it was approved, now, I mean, no one would have thought about pickleball. It wouldn't have been on that master plan. So, as things have evolved and just as a point of information, much of what, much of what was laid out in the original master plan was driven by the evaluation and analysis and discovery of an important archaeological site on the property. So, that, you know, underlying, that underlying resource will still be a major influence in directing anything that happens on the property.
There's also a recreation study done, really, because of what recreation use in town has given current population, projected population.
Right, well, yeah, a lot of work was done in the schools. And I think at the time, there was a hope and an expectation that it would become almost a hub for soccer teams. And I remember at the time that, you know, they really were emphasizing the availability of the soccer fields as opposed to others and that, I mean, I'm not saying it's good and bad, but at the time, that was what was, I think, influencing the design.
Assuming that they are able to come up with more money for some tables and benches or whatever in this nearby area, do they need to come back to us then?
I think if it's a modest site improvement. It could be a field change.
So, we could discuss it in our resolution perhaps as being something that we expect to see?
Well, since Jim has, since we asked for it and Jim spoke to them, they responded, I think we could put something, whether it's actually in the resolution or whether it's a note that we look, you know, that we depend, obviously depending on the size and the scale and the details of it, but that we would encourage maybe further consideration of this as funds become available. And that would be up then to the zoning administrator, maybe a consultation with Gemini as to whether it constitutes a field change or it constitutes coming back for a site plan modification.
Okay.
I mean, putting down some gravel and some benches, I don't think any of us would say, don't do it, but if it gets into paving and water fountains and, you know, I mean, you know, right off.
What are the nice things about that spot also to use it as a patio such as it's quite centrally located in a lot of the different amenities that can really satisfy a lot of things? The only thing that was a little strange to me going there and this felt is like an afterthought reaction is the fencing. I don't mind the height variation, but now you have alleyways between the fencing and if it was properly thought out, you would have shared the fence.
Yeah.
The way the basketball court and the tennis court does.
If they knew they had a master plan, they would.
Right, so it was like, they almost wish that the pickleball fencing could, like, does it have to be that close to the pickleball court? Could it actually just be utilizing the side fencings of the basketball and the tennis?
I don't know. Can pickleballs enter?
But there's, I think there's a limitation of the size of it. I believe there might be, it might be, might be more technical needs.
Okay, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe.
There's also, the alley is also about like, I think, ten to twelve feet, if not a little more between the fences.
Yeah.
So, if they were to run the fence all the way back, it's probably a creative grass area in the back of the house. Usually you want fencing around the paved area.
So, we do have a plan from ten years ago. This is really cool.
This is a plan from twenty thirteen.
It would be nice for this to actually get updated on those things that have not been executed that really speak more to the needs of the town now. I mean, if it's a ten-year difference, you know, we make that suggestion.
Yeah, well, and I think, I think the suggestion, kind of the closing is that they, they didn't want that to be attached to this and it's really left in our hands where there is really not, and I might be totally incorrect in this, but my understanding is no sports committee or anyone actually really working with, there's no one really owning this on a sports committee level, which, you know, would be helpful. It was a, it was a comment in passing.
Well, it falls under the recreation.
So, I think it's, I think it's going there and having some activity going there hopefully helped make it, but I do, it would be nice to know, like, I had no, no idea of a master plan. It was, unfortunately, thanks for digging it up and I do see it's happening and it's just, it'd be nice to know what's happening, when it's happening. It's really, like I said, dues to me, I think dues to probably the residents, that there's money set aside and they're working on, you know, the tennis courts, and they've been trying for two years and with COVID, they've had challenges and along with the basketball courts, which are, and that they're also working on a future of lighting with LED and just, you know, much more energy efficient. And so, I think the fact that they're working on those things, they do require funds, I think if there's probably a better known, then we would, they'd have probably more support. That's maybe one way of putting it.
Sean, you were talking, sorry.
No. Is that bathrooms and.
You were talking to the Town Board or to the?
I was trying to, one of the representatives of the Town Board.
The Town Board, because there actually is a.
Oh, Julie.
T T S M Park Committee that is supposed to be stage managing everything that goes on down there, but the committee has been reconstituted. I don't think they meet all that frequently.
I was thinking of the lack of information being available and being kind of departmentalized.
It's one thing you may get either, because traditionally, who knows when a master plan is booked, you have to know whether the decisions were made, so you probably would have lost some institutional memory.
I did talk to the Chair of the Park and Rec Committee to be aware of this because we are actually, by this, this site plan amendment, removing what was proposed to be maintenance garage and waterless toilets. Because this is essentially happening on existing paved area, we didn't think it was necessary to go back and spend the money to completely redo the site plans. This will get folded into that folder and I was advocating for not spending the money to redraft these. We tried to actually get them from the previous engineer. We've not been able to get our hands on the originals. That's the discussion, but kind of ridiculous. But anyway, if we move forward, I know that Chauncey has said he will move forward with, and he talked to you about the idea of the passive area in front of the pickleball courts. He has committed to finding a place to plant some trees for the three that would come down to the pickleball courts. And he has committed to also talking, I think he has started talking about assessing lighting parkwide. Instead of just doing, looking at the existing ones that are there, there's a need to look at what's there going on. So, they're going to have to get a lighting specialist in or someone to take a look at what's there. We know we've heard in the past, you know, issues and concerns about the lighting that exists now. There's new needs, different needs, whatever the case may be, so they're going to look at that holistically. So, at some point, yes, it may make sense to go back and I think to redo the site plan. But with the soccer field, the site plan amendment and this change again being on the pavement, I was advocating for not spending the money on holding the plan and getting it all reengineered.
Is the skate park still going there? Does that actually happen?
We're working on.
Well, I think since the recreation. I think we have the opportunity to share with the representative from the town these suggestions, which sound to me like it's including the concept of revisiting the master plan for the park in a more comprehensive way. Because it seems, you know, a lot of questions that are being asked now, is this still happening? Is that still happening? You know, maybe, maybe the town could ask the recreation committee to, you know, review the master plan and issue some sort of report to the Town Board about where they're going. It's a little complicated because the recreation committee doesn't have the authority to make decisions. They simply take recommendations to the Town Board. So, they may not think of themselves holistically as the sort of stewards of the master plan, which I think they are. I think they're the committee closest to what's going on there that should look at everything comprehensively.
They're always going to advocate, because I mean.
Yes, yeah.
Reaching the village and the town, the town is designated as being responsible for developing.
Right, but then my point is the recreation committee cannot come to us with an application. They make a recommendation to the Town Board and the Town Board comes.
Unless, of course, the Town Board signs a membership and is designated for, you know, he's a Rocky.
Well, it's not over complicated.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just a lack of information out there and I think Chauncey is very, very, as even just going through this conversation with the board tonight, is, was very well aware of that and very like, how do we fix this? And it was really all about how do we, how do we answer all these questions and really solve this? There's no pushback and it's all about solutions, which obviously should be. So, I think, I think to your point, I think it'd be nice for us to take a look at this just, you know, and I understand that the costs are involved in this, we don't want to do this and another ten years, reality is, there's still no funds to do some of this stuff, but it would be interesting. And I, you know, I even mentioned maybe some kind of workshop or something, whereas there's a lot of new people in this town, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, people that might want to be involved, but they don't even know where to start or, you know, how to help. You know, like the skate park is, is a huge, again, it's something that is coming back, but skate, skate parks have not been something of, for years, you know, in the past. So, that was kind of also Chauncey's opened a lot of doors to, to try and.
Were you alone on the site visit?
Oh, we kind of did separate site visits.
But is there anything you'd like to add?
No, that was it. It was just a, you know, fencing distancing, but otherwise, I actually have not been back there for a long time. I sometimes play basketball all the time. It's amazing you have such a range of children, very little kids and they're all the way up through teenagers, which is why I think the skate park, all these things, like it's really become very lively for the youth here. I was so impressed. I haven't been back there in so long and I was like, wow, like this has, they, there is so much happening. It's just now taking it to the next level and filling these gaps and really making it cohesive. But other than that, I just felt like the piece of value makes a lot of sense. Because it's central. But that's it. I thought it was, it makes sense.
Any other, when would member comments? Is there anyone here? Is there anyone here from the public wishing to?
I'm too lazy to get up, but I, I think Sean brings up a really good point of public awareness and maybe a tour, like a Saturday afternoon, come and see what's happening and down there. So, Reuben?
Yeah, I think that perhaps some communication from the Conservation Board and the Planning Board to the Town Board regarding the benefits to revisiting the master plan would be good. As a new pickleball player, I'll say that it's a, it's a great sport and really glad the town is, is pursuing this. I would also say that benches, to me, would be a critical part of the courts. So, I'm not sure if that's in the purview of the Planning Board to say that, that it needs to be included or not, but.
Well, we did suggest it, but I think the answer was, it wasn't budgeted for this portion, for this part of the project, right?
Yeah, but I think it's fair to say and I think to back me up, that Chauncey is extremely interested in making that happen. I think he sees the value in it, the pickleball courts and everything else. So, I would see that.
I'll bring a folding chair.
Yeah.
So, time's up.
All right, well, since we've heard from the two members of the public remaining, I will ask again if there's any more public comment, but I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Michael, second?
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? So, then we have an approval resolution, which we.
She's actually read it in advance.
Which you read in advance. Well, anyway, that's okay. So, and you want to reread the section on? No, you're, you're on what page are you on?
The torn off.
No, okay. You're, I'm looking at the old one, aren't I?
Yes, sorry.
That's all right. So, we have a motion and we approve the closing of the public hearing. Now, we're looking at the draft approval resolution.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, I didn't read this one, did I?
No, I'm a little confused.
So, for your consideration tonight, a draft approval resolution for Thompson Mezzal Park Pickleball Courts Site Plan Amendment, which also includes a special use permit for the fence, to utilize existing paved area for insulation of pickleball courts and the installation of the fence on the property along Ryan Brook Road within the Civic Zoning District, reaffirming the action is unlisted under secret for which coordinated environmental quality reviews concluded, based upon the report, review of submitted information, finding the work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter one-two-five, with respect to the application for the special use permit to authorize the construction of the fence with the courts, finding the work intended used to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits and granting the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval, with respect to the application for site plan approval, finding the work intended used to be consistent with Town Hall Chapter one-two-five, section one-two-five-seven-five, improving the application inclusive of the materials and plans by car companies slash Catala Engineering dated twelve eighteen As I had done previously, requesting the project contractor to take care and understand there are prehistoric artifacts on the site and have a specialist available to assist the situation if needed. I don't think that will come into play here, but we did do that with the soccer fields, which were actually a more sensitive area, but I thought it was worth keeping that in just in case. And then authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan subject to those three conditions as well as the fourth one, requesting the town board provide the planning board with information on improvements to the passive area adjacent to the courts, and requesting that the town board consider revisiting the master plan for the park in the future. I'll write that up.
Okay, could I have a motion? Second, Edna, I'll call the board. Michael?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
And I both aye. The last scheduled public hearing for this evening is Rockledge, 492 Akron Hook Road, site plan approval, special use permit and wetlands permit for condo units, and I stated earlier that the applicant has asked for a continuance to April 3rd. I will...
We do a lot of motion at the last meeting to continue that.
Okay, so that's already, so with still a public hearing, is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment on the Rockledge application?
I'm refused.
Thank you, Edna. Okay, if there is, so we've already done that, what?
I don't know, it came up that they asked for continuation, and then it's motion last meeting.
So we don't need to do anything further this evening?
Just, just announce.
Okay. All right, then I think we're at a point to ask for a motion to Jim. It's a birthday cousin to Jim.
Thanks.
Actually...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, did you?
Our engineer filed a little bit everything, I just hope they have lost it.
Our engineer, I don't believe we, I don't believe we have, I don't believe all the final reports from him are back, is that correct?
It's due...
Yes, it's still in the process.
Okay.
There's, I mean, if you're asking if there's anything that you can look at, no, not, nothing new yet.
Okay.
You can stay in touch with Gretchen, and she'll make sure that you know when it comes out.
That's Cara's job.
Okay.
Cara's in New York, so I'm here.